I would like to call this meeting to order. The committee have a whole meeting for Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. This meeting is called to order and agenda for the meeting is circulated, which is number two. Going down to number 3.1, we have our RCMP representative, Mitch Takchuk here. I'll pass it over to him to give the report.
Certainly, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So as far as the report is concerned, so for the third quarter, just page one, just speak quickly on the vacancies. So we have four in total, three being in the city of Salt Kirk and then one being in the Red River North with the east and west St. Paul area. So that position has been, has been planned. There's a planning, you know what is in for that position. So we hope to have somebody in place by the, by the end of the year. So of course then we'll tackle our upcoming vacancies with the rotations. But that's, you know, we're, we're pretty pleased to be in that position overall. Moving on to-
All right, just got, so you have up here, regular members, there's four vacancies, public servants, there's four. And then you have, the provincial total is six. Is that, is that right?
Provincial total, yeah, we have-
Provincial total is six, but the other on top here on our regular-
Yeah, one Red River-
You have a total of eight.
Yeah, so we'd have four support staff in Salt Kirk, one support staff in Red River North.
Okay.
And then one regular member, so that would be six in total for the provincial vacancies.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, five public servants and one regular member.
Okay.
Yeah, we're operating one with one shortage for the support staff at the Red River North office.
Okay.
So just moving along to section four, just on the, the stats for the quarter. As always, just highlighting some of the, the, you know, significant changes over the two periods. I'll start with the assaults. So we've gone from, from three to six. And looking at those, four of them were, three of them were domestic related. Again, with the influx of, of the population, we, we see that as a, as a standard increase for the most part. Some of these were family disputes, children fighting, they get, they get kind of reported or captured with the states, with the same statistics. So that's the, kind of the capture of the assaults. And moving on down to the theft, under $5,000, a fairly significant increase there from 11 to 29. You know, a lot of the same type of incidents of the 29, 15 of them were theft from motor vehicles. So both a combination of vehicles being left unlocked, vehicles being rummaged through. You know, of the 15, of those seven, like wallets were kept in the vehicle, credit cards stolen, cash stolen. So, you know, some, certainly some, some room for public education there. But that being said, it's still a concerning number of, of incidents overall. So again, of the, of the 15, of, sorry, of the 29, 15 were from vehicles. Three were stolen Amazon packages. Something new, we, we saw this go around was that there was empty Amazon packages being delivered. So where the item was stolen along the way, they don't know, but that's something new that we're seeing. So, and then one was, you know, taken off someone's front porch. So there's the three there. One construction site was hit with a theft. And then really there's a combination of other miscellaneous thefts from sheds, a couple of bikes from backyards. That's, that's what we, the, what we're seeing overall. You know, in speaking, and we can, well, well, Hawk, I'm, I'm sure you guys received the, the property crime analysis that we did up just with respect to some of the hotspots, hotspot areas. So certainly something we're going to tackle over the next couple of months is now that with that report, we can really drill, drill down on some of the, the areas of concern and really will allow us to focus our efforts on significant areas, so.
Do you think that a lot of the theft is because of new builds and construction, or is it just random?
Well, I, I don't know if it's, like actually this go around, I saw a decrease in thefts from construction sites. There is one theft under and then one theft over, over $5,000. There was some stucco equipment and a cement mixture that was stolen. But really, in previous quarters, we've seen upwards of, I think, eight or 10 thefts from construction sites. So I think it's, whether it's individuals that are in the area or coming in from, say, the north end of Winnipeg to comb the streets and check for unlocked vehicles, that kind of a thing. So, you know, that's a pretty significant increase from, you know, 11 to 29. So we're, we're aware of, of this increase and it's important for us to, to change how we're patrolling and, you know, increase patrols and also the, the shifts and things like that to, just to focus in on, on this area. So any questions on the, the theft under $5,000 yet?
Well, I'm just wondering, have you guys ever come across, you know, you drive, you drive through the area or whatever, that, you know, you see someone that's walking and they kind of look out, but have you guys, you know, pulled over, not pulled over?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we can do street checks, like we'd ask people for ID and, and, you know, it's a pretty normal course of, of, of business, I would say. If, you know, it's always a fine line because you have to be careful that you're not profiling people, right, of course? And, but I mean, we all know when something just doesn't seem quite right or something, someone would stand out. So we certainly can do that. And yeah, and that's part of the, you know, what I was talking about is the traffic from the north end, perhaps migrating across into this area where they know that's a lot of heavy police presence. You know, people aren't, aren't quite as, as, you know, in tune with locking things up and keeping things together. So, yeah, we can certainly do that, yeah.
I know there's lots of, you know, bike traffic coming from inside the city to out, right?
Yeah.
And then those are the ones that they got backpacks and everything else, right?
Yeah.
And the, I don't know, I'm not sure if you were sent the amount of graffiti that was in the trails and then our, you know, mural got very heavily damaged as well. And then the whole fence that you see from the perimeter, the trails, it, and then board, the information board, everything got, yeah, so.
Was that reported? I didn't see that one.
I don't, I don't think it was.
Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, and it's, you know, we'll, we're, we're very, we're very active on coming up with a, with a plan and a strategy here to, over the next couple of months while the, before it gets too cold to focus in, in some time here and, and get, because it's really, even looking at the addresses, they're all within a certain area. So I think these, and a lot of repeat areas. So I think it would be likely the same individual responsible for this one. It's, it's, it's an area to come where you can benefit or gather things that they'll return, right? So, and moving on to the-
I just got a comment. Okay, you said there's only 15 of the scavenging vehicles and stuff like that. But that's a 15 that have been reported, like I had a couple of weeks span there where I had calls from residents. Every second day in the same area is probably the same addresses you have. They all got videos of the same three people. And some of them are almost clear enough to make their faces out, it's just the cameras. Or the same vehicles stopping at the corner, going back to houses and working their way through. When it's being reported over and over, is there something that's getting done? Because it's, it's, I think the last four or five times that people have called me, it's been between that magic hour of like 4:30 to 6 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, like the videos are clear enough, like, so you can kind of tell.
Well, yeah, and like when I say changing our patrol time, changing our shift schedule, shift pattern, that's something that we'll have to, what we're going to be doing over the next, you know, couple of weeks to, to, or sooner to, to focus on that. Because we'll be, because, you know, people know, they'll, they'll learn what our shifts are, they'll pay attention to things like that, right? And then, and know, so, and we encourage people to, to report it. People are calling directly to you, it's still, it's still important to be reported to the police because we're able to, you know, we, we share those videos. If we do get a, a good still image from a, from a security camera, we'll share it within our detachment or with the Winnipeg police, you know, so if anybody's recognized, then that will start an investigation. And then if we have people that, you know, share the same image, that we can link these files together. But it's really important that they're reported and-
I have one comment on the reporting, is when there's something going on during the day, they call the East Saint Paul detachment, nobody picks up, it says to call the Salt Kirk detachment. That answering loop to push this button says to call your local detachment. So where, where is the proper, you don't want to overload 911. But there, there should be a number that we should be able to reach during the day. And then I finally got through, I think, one time to Salt Kirk and they were telling me, well, there's nobody at East Saint Paul to answer the phone today.
Okay.
But meanwhile, it was a three time, I went through the loop three times trying to get through to it, but I hit the right numbers or another setting, like it's-
Yeah, and you know, back to the vacancy in, in East Saint Paul, we're down to one public servant. So whether it be lunch breaks or time off or whatever, but we have been backfilling that spot. But if it is in fact, you know, vacant or there's no one there, the phone gets redirected to Salt Kirk and you should be able to call the 482-1222 number. And it's, it's, it's a man between, you know, 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, there should be somebody that answers. I know it's like the whole, you know, the, the pre-recorded messaging and things like that. But once you get through that, you should get a, a human on the other end of it.
I tried three different ways, thinking I hit a diff, you know, maybe I'll go in through this one or that one. And at the end, it ends up telling me to call my local detachment.
Okay, well, like, we are amalgamated with, like Red River North and, and Salt Kirk are amalgamated. So we operate as one, so there should be no separation as far as, you know, we should be able to take, or we, we are able to take your information in Salt Kirk as they would in, in Red River North. So if you ever have those issues, again, I would ask for you to reach out to me and I can make sure that it's corrected. And I'll, I can stress, you know, the importance of, of, of operating as one and not being, you need to call your local detachment. Well, we are your local detachment, right?
But I think that's a deterrent for people at the same time. You're sitting there trying for an hour to call in to do something and you're just going, hey, life, don't have time for this.
Yeah, and I, I lived it like personally too, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not great. But I mean, there's also, they can report some of that stuff online, like if it's a matter of, of just getting a file and then starting something and then getting a call back, like there's a way to report online. And then if it's not urgent, you can report it online, initiate the complaint and then someone will call you back for additional details or if there's video surveillance to pick up, that can be arranged as well.
Well, maybe if we can get something like that-
Sure.
Written up through the RCMP that we can put it on newsletter.
Certainly.
Because right now residents are going to the back of our newsletter, to the non-emergency number, calling that number. Then it flips you all over, but maybe, you know, if there is something, there's ways to-
Okay.
To something that we can add there, so.
No, that's a great point. I'll, I'll share that with, with our team there and, and get something just more with respect to the online reporting. And that's the way they feature for the, for the most part and that's good.
Some people might like it better that way because you can actually be doing it on the go.
You can do it at your own time and, yeah, no, precisely, that's great, thank you. So just moving along to the, the theft over. So there was a CDU and trailer taken from an area near Griffin Way as well as two thefts of boat and trailer, one off of Graspear and one off of North Main here as well. So again, a lot of property crime that we're seeing, it's going to be up to us to, you know, increase our presence in the area and, and try to mitigate some of that. And it's no doubt being areas being focused as, as an area where, you know, it's lucrative to, to, to come and spend your time and, and focus on some of these areas. So we're, we're very much, again, in, in line with this. So a couple of these, there is, you know, a couple of trailers that got flat tire on the highway. They were left overnight, they came back in the morning and they were gone. There's a couple there that happened, again, the construction equipment from, from Clover Terrace as well. So this, you know, again, we went from, from seven to eight, not a significant increase, but still, you know, some significant thefts overall, so. Any questions on that? And then, so the theft of other vehicle, again, a lot of those are the, like the CDU boat and trailer, that kind of a thing that, that was captured. And then moving on down to the, breaking into the business. I don't have any comments on that one.
Can I ask you, when you passed by there, the possession of stolen property, was it significant? Like was it a-
I didn't actually look into that one. I can and, and let you know what the, what the outcome of that one was, yeah. I did focus on, on the mischief to property, that one going down from the 18 to 25. A lot of these were damage to vehicles, so whether it's children or kids in an area, you know, scrapped, there's a couple of cars that were keyed. You know, some vehicles that were, that were rummaged through, nothing necessarily stolen, but just overall mischief, noise complaints. Again, some damage to, to parked vehicles, smashed windows, that kind of a thing. So again, just, you know, really focusing on, on some of the foot traffic, I think that's in the area would be important. Any questions on any of the other stats of the Coroner's Act? So that went up from, let's see here, from three to five. So unfortunately, there is two suicides in that number and three natural, natural deaths. And then the, at the bottom, the Control of Drugs and Substances Act. That was two information files that were, that were reported, so for individuals possessing drugs. And one was a traffic stop that was initiated and two individuals were found on, on North on Main Street with their possession of, of methamphetamine. So that was a proactive patrol and a subsequent stop on that file as well, so.
I have a question regarding the false alarms. Can you just elaborate? I see there's an increase of like-
Yeah, I mean, we've seen an increase, I think that has a lot to do with the population increase and more people are just getting home alarms and then we're seeing an increase overall, like with the population growing as it has been.
Okay, so then you respond to that? Is that a drain on resources in terms of being able to respond?
It can be, like, I mean, there's a bit of strategy involved, like it depends on the number of hits. Like we'll kind of know if it, if there's, if it's a multiple hit alarm, we'll typically pay a little more attention to it. Like if it's a, you know, a front door with, with multiple interior motions, we'll likely get there a bit quicker. But if it's a one hit, like a front door, you know, it could just be, like, most often than not, they're, they're false. And it can be a drain on resources, but you kind of have to just, you know, know, know the, I guess just know what you're after. Like we, I know a lot of jurisdictions, they won't, they won't attend to single hit alarms. Like the, like the city won't attend unless it's a multiple hit. And so we, we kind of play that with you as well. And more often than not, there's a key holder available, they can go, it's false. Or somebody sets it off as they're walking into the house, that kind of a thing. Like we'll see a spike at like 5:00 when people are coming home from work, so we kind of know, right?
I usually get a phone call though from my alarm company.
Yeah, it'll start with that, yeah.
And they'll say, like, are you at home?
Yeah.
No. Is there somebody at your house? No? Okay, they're going to call the police.
Yeah.
So then when, when they call you, does that, is that taken more seriously?
Well, if there's-
They've talked to me and I'm not home.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if that's the case, if they can relate to us, we've spoke to the homeowner, there's no one that's supposed to be there, we'll, we'll, we'll get there quicker, right?
Okay.
For sure.
Can I ask you a question on page one, with your resource review? So I'm just curious, what's the total population of the area that, of your detachment? And then what's the, I know there's a bit of science with regards to policing coverage in association with the relative population. And so I'm just curious to know where, where, where this detachment is in terms of that statistic and sort of, what, what's the population and what is the coverage ratio? Just curious.
Like member per-
Member per population? Yeah, and what's kind of, what's the best practice in terms of policing world, in terms of the science behind it?
Well, I mean, it, I know there's a, there's an equation, like I don't know what the current population is of, of our, you know, entire detachment area. With, with the increase in population of east and west St. Paul, you know, I don't know off the top of my head what it would be.
It's okay, you can come back to us.
It's around, like I would say around 50,000, like that's-
Yeah.
Sort of the, the last number that we had-
Right.
That was before, you know, your, your communities are growing. As far as a ratio is concerned, like I don't know off the top of my head what that would be either, like it really depends. It's not so much on, on population, but it's, it's calls for service, like the history of, of calls for service. Violent calls for service are also played into that as well. It'll depend on, it's like the, the crime severity index-
Right.
That is released yearly by the government that, you know, certain offenses and certain crimes are scored higher. So the higher, like Thompson, for instance, has a higher crime severity index. So that'll play into the, into the resource picture, whereas a community that has a lower one would have fewer members. So it really depends on calls for service and, and the nature of those calls, you know?
Okay, that makes sense.
But I can back you with the, and, and even with the, you know, it's, it's, it's the population, but it's the, it's the geography as well of our detachment area that's, that's quite large. Like we go, you know, into the city basically, right? And then just south of Winnipeg Beach and up to Grand Beach on the other side of the lake, so it's quite a large area.
Just started, I don't want me to take away from your presentation, but-
No, no, not at all.
But I had, I had asked for the geography and you guys put together a really snazzy picture here. And so I really appreciate that, thank you very much. It does tell, it does say a lot of what's happening.
Yeah.
And really appreciate that.
Well, that's great and we're, we're happy to have it and I know it's an 18-month report, but, you know, for our analytical section, they really want to make sure that they're not just capturing a short window. It's, it has to be something that can, you can work with, so and see some, some significant trends. Anything else? And just as far as the, the online reporting, we also, what has been done in the past is we will come up with a pamphlet just for some awareness and for some education into, for the public when it comes to leaving things in vehicles, that kind of a thing. I think that might be a good time to introduce that online reporting and then we'll also do something through the media as well. So I'll get in touch with our media guy and he can arrange something just with respect to the online reporting.
Do you guys get involved with providing information to the public about the government's, the provincial government's security rebate, $300?
Like the home security?
Yeah.
No, we wouldn't.
Okay, but do people approach you with that information or?
Not me personally, yeah, I know it went pretty quick with the first, the first wave of it went pretty quick from my understanding. But I'm not sure whether there are going to be increases in that overall budget for, for the home security systems. But, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a peace of mind and we always encourage people to do it, so. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, this was a really good report, like your property crime analysis.
Okay.
Yeah, it really shows that there's quite a difference between us and our neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, it is for sure, it's really beneficial for us. Focus after, so I can drive around and sure, we can, we'll just come up with some different ways of, of focusing on it as well. Not necessarily in a, in a marked police car, but other, other ways to, to get up there, so.
Do you find that the cop program's still helpful?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it has its place.
Doesn't hurt, right?
Has its place, like eyes and ears are important because we're, for the most part, we're stretched thin and we have a lot on our plates most days and to have eyes and ears and that's all it takes, right? A lot of the time, so. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so 3.2, they did not, we were not able to come this evening, so we're going to schedule it to next week, November. It's the animal management services, takes us down to 4.1, nothing else. 4.4.1 financial reports.
So I'm here today to present our August month-end statements. A little bit of change from the prior month. Overall, our current surplus for the year as of August 31st is just over 3 million, shown on the bottom of the statement. And then you have your usual fluctuations within your bank account, your receivables and your payables as things are paid and received. So that's the balance sheet. The following statement is our statement of operations, so it shows our revenues and our expenses. And on the page four of that, you'll see that the surplus does match what's shown on our balance sheet. Would you like any details on the statement of operations or balance sheet?
Customer library?
Yeah, so we've got a budget there of 18.4 million for the tax levy. Since this is the end of August, it, it's just that those had kind of been out there.
Uh, no, so the, like, are you talking about the variance of 5 million?
Yeah.
That's related to the school rebate. So you'll see, you'll have that amount and then there's the 5.1 just below, it's on each one. Yeah. So there's a difference of $1,000 between the two. The reason being is that we didn't have the information at time budget was created to update those numbers internally.
Oh, all right, okay.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, so carrying on, so the next statement is our reserves. So here's our reserves for the month ending August. So the top section is the cash flow and deposit. This is updated once a year, end of December. All entries are recorded for interest as well as the adjustments between the due to and due froms. The due to, due froms, these ones will fluctuate monthly, but there will be interests added or transferred over to the general. So these, this section here changes as expenditures are made for our capital projects. And your overall reserve fund is shown just on the bottom half of this statement. So there you can see what our overall balance is in each reserve as of August 31st.
Go ahead. Why do you get so much money in the Canada Day reserve fund? It's a lot of money in there.
Each year, there is an amount budgeted for Canada Day, it's 36,000, I believe, that's automatically put in.
Yeah.
And then we also have expenditures, so we budget on both sides. We budget to transfer funds to the reserve and then we also budget on the operating side for any expenses. If Canada Day runs a deficit, we will withdraw from that account. If it runs surplus, those funds are automatically transferred in. There has been years that there has been deficits due to poor weather. We have a report coming to council, it should be presented at the next COW meeting and for the 2024 Canada Day, which is finalizing up some revenues.
Okay, if, if you could for next meeting, just, I, I would, I would like to just see a breakdown of the last four years. Can, you know, just what the, what our costs have been.
Well, there was two years we didn't have Canada Day.
Right, so there were funds budgeted and they were transferred in, yeah.
You still did the transfers, so they're 36, 36, right?
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that needs to get chopped down, I think it's, it's a lot of money just sitting there. So, well, I'll, well, you know, I'll wait to see what, what you're presenting to us next month and then if you could, just the last couple, you know, last few years of expenditures versus revenues specifically.
Yeah, I'll do a report. Okay, so following that, we jump into our utilities. We start off with the Rivers Edge Sewer Utility. You'll see at the end of August, it has a slight deficit. That is because we bill out quarterly, the next quarterly billing for the statements will show on September. We just sent out all the bills last week. So that amount will, will adjust on the balance sheet as well as the following statement, which is the statement of operations. Again, your revenues versus your expenses, which shows your net deficit for August. Again, your revenues versus your expenses, which shows your net des- deficit, uh, for August. And then the following statement is what is held within the Rivers Edge Sewer Reserve. Questions, comments on Rivers Edge? Yep, okay, moving on. Following that is our sewer utility, so you'll see we're sitting at, uh, five hundred and sixty seven thousand dollar surplus in the sewer utility. Uh, we are required to run a surplus on a cash basis, because it has to offset our amortization at the end of the year for the assets. Um, that being said, though, on the cash basis, we transfer the surplus at the end of the year to the reserve. When it's transferred over to PSAB, they make the adjustments and take that into consideration, so there's a PSAB adjustment for the surplus and the amortization to ensure that, uh, the op- the utility is operating at optimal balance. Um, we cannot run a deficit within the utility.
Just one question.
Mm-hmm.
So when you have this, uh, surplus of, you got nineteen million, seven hundred thousand.
Right.
That's the assets.
That's all your assets, and if there's a little bit of surplus from prior years.
Cash.
That would, yeah, cash surplus, that would also be in there as well.
And do you know what that cash surplus is from prior years, or?
Uh, yeah, so your cash surplus will show on your reserve sheet of six hundred and ninety eight thousand, so it's, um, sorry, two statements. Keep, yeah, so, uh, yeah, go forward, I know, forward. So there's your statement of operations, again, revenues and expenses, and the following statement, actually, I don't know. Uh, is your reserve. So that's your cash balance.
Okay, so does that include the five hundred thousand, or is that?
No.
No, the five hundred?
The, the surplus ha- is always transferred at the end of the year, once all allocations have been completed, um, for the utility. And it is done before amortization has been recorded on the utility side. Um, so again, I'm, just to reiterate, statement of operations is your revenues and expenses, and you'll see that your surplus on that one matches what's shown on your balance sheet. Um, any questions, comments on the sewer utility? Nope, carrying on, next is the water. Uh, so you'll see here, we have a slight deficit as of the end of August. Again, that will change once the September billings have been posted to the account, which have been done already. Uh, so you'll see in September, that amount will show as a surplus. You won't have a deficit in the water, and I don't foresee a deficit for the end of the year either. Um, so unlike, uh, the same as the sewer, your surplus there of fifteen includes your assets, as well as your cash surplus. There was a couple deficits in the beginning when the utility was first, uh, set up, due to the low number of connected homes. So the revenues were not where they should be, uh, for a utility. The P U B is under that understanding, and we are working with them with a, um, our report that we submitted earlier this year. I know they're quite behind, so I haven't heard anything from them since then. Um, following your balance sheet is your statement of operations, so your revenues versus expenses. Again, it shows your deficit on the bottom, matches what's on your balance sheet, and that is followed by your water reserve, so we have a small surplus in there. And that is, there was a nineteen thousand dollar surplus two years ago, and last year was the balance, and this again will change at the end of twenty twenty four.
So I got a question, so when you said, uh, P U B, that's.
That's Public Utilities Board.
Yeah, so you had put an application in earlier this year, and that in, that includes for both sewer and water?
So we had to submit a deficit application for sewer and water. Uh, they review it to ensure that our rates are adequate. Um, knowing that the water was a new utility at the time when the deficits did occur. Um, as long as you have a method for collecting that deficit back over the years, generally, it's not, it's not frowned upon. Um, they may tell you you have to do a rate rider, but we haven't heard anything, I don't know where they're at with it. I do know it takes about a year for the P U B to do anything, um, they're just that backlogged.
So what's a rate rider?
Uh, you have an additional rate on your utility bill.
For a specific period?
For a specific period, so many years. It's generally a flat rate, it's not based on anything, like, um, consumption wise or anything, it'd just be a flat rate, everybody would pay it.
Okay.
Uh, so following our financial statements, we have our capital summary for the year, the percentage of completion. So this one here, um, and we'll try and shrink it down so it fits, but I know it's hard to read. Um, so we have our year-to-date actuals that have been recorded in the books as of August thirty first. The percentage of completion is up to, uh, October fourth. Um, just before I produce the statement, so you can see where we're at as of October fourth for completion-wise. Uh, a number of these projects are wrapping up in the next couple of weeks. Uh, and following that, then you'll start to see the, uh, expenses come through.
So for Westlaw Hollow, you have fifty percent complete?
Yes, so fifty percent means that the play structure has been ordered, I believe they're actually on site now, um, starting the build and installation.
When did they, did they start today?
I thi- I think it was earlier this week.
Uh, I'm not, I'm not certain of that, that, they intend to be complete by the end of October, though, still. They're still targeting the end of October for completion of play structure.
Cause I drove by yesterday, and there was nobody there.
There was nobody there, okay, so, the last, last meeting I was at, I was told that they would be onsite shortly, so.
No.
Yeah, I think they still have to put topsoil down, right?
Yeah, landscaping will follow construction.
Oh, so construction first, landscaping.
Yeah.
They just created it so that it was all high enough to sit around, damaging it as they're building it.
Yeah, so we expect to see the the play structure going in shortly, and then the landscaping to follow, uh, upon that. Then you'll start to see the expenses roll through for that, um, but yeah, the reasoning for the fifty percent is because fifty percent of the job is done. Once the installation is complete and the landscaping, then the pro- project will be completed. Any other questions, comments?
Uh, I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, the business park sign, yeah, has, has anything happened with that?
We've, um, we've started taking a look at, uh, different options there and different nice settings there. Once we get a, uh, we've, uh, ordered a a concept design as well to be produced. Once we have that, we'll bring it forward to council to, uh, to have a look at and see if it sort of meets expectations.
Did we get hydro to get power over there? Cause that's six months.
Yeah, that's, um, is is the intent to have a, a, a.
A lighted sign.
A lit, a lit sign?
For sure, yeah.
It is, yeah.
I didn't know that.
Well, I don't really see what the benefit of having a unleaded sign would be.
Especially the space we have there for it.
Mm-hmm.
It's easily accessible year-round.
You know, I, uh, for, what do we got in there? We got, uh, forty grand, that'd be a pretty, uh, substantial unleaded sign. I know I've, uh, I have, I've put up, you know, the one at Dakota Village Mall, that sign was sixty five grand, but that's a full LED sign with eight tenants on it, so.
Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll bring forward some concepts, once we've got the final design to council, make sure that, uh, we're on the same page in terms of expectations. I think the intent was to 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 bring forward everything for, uh, your review ahead of time.
I don't remember an LED sign. We just said a sign, I don't remember being LED.
So there, that that one project will be a carryover for twenty twenty five, um, our anticipated completion is next October.
I thought it was gonna be granted or something.
Just due to the timelines of, um, the sign design, and if we do go with lighted, uh, a lighted design, uh, the timeline of hydro.
If that's where we could go ahead right now, is getting hydro in there and get the box put in with the hydro right to that.
But why did we say it was gonna be an electric sign?
There's a, there's a small electric sign there right now, it's the one right on Eames and and McPhillips that's, you know, thirty feet in the air and you know, I can, I know that's all we had then, but it's it's a little sign thirty feet up in the air lit up. Probably missed it.
Please, well, there already is electricity there.
No, it's on the corner of Eames, it's actually an easement that's on the property owner, the guy that sells quads and everything, so.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I got a comment, maybe for, maybe it's for the CEO. Um, I think this is a good, uh, this is a sort of a good dashboard, this capital budget presentation with the percentage of completion. Um, but, you know, I got a lot of questions with regards to some of the projects that have a a sort of a low completion status. So I'm wondering if, um, in future, that a, um, a one-pager, a two-pager could accompany this? That provides, um, some information from wherever the staff is project managing the projects, um, sort of with a monthly update. Or the most, the most recent update in terms of, uh, where the issue is regarding, you know, this particular project, are there i- i- issues with risks? Is it on time? Uh, you know, what's the procurement status, what's the, uh, you know, what's the status basically? Um, what's on, what's on the go, what's under development? Um, I think that would help a lot in terms of providing some good insight of where things are at. Like I, I'm wondering, the surveillance cameras, PR number sixteen, the speed radar signs are ten percent both. You know, we got, uh, a couple things that are low, uh, some things that are completed, which is great, and then some things that are like fifty percent, thirty percent. Um, but, uh, instead of asking questions of every single one, I think it'd be useful to have a bit of an update, um, you know, sort of a short paragraph where things are at.
And based on the R C and P report just now, those surveillance cameras are more important than ever. And I think we approved this in budget, right? So that was like March or April, and it's, you know, the anticipated completion is November thirtieth. So I don't know who was in charge of ordering that, but.
For surveillance cameras?
The surveillance cameras.
Yeah, we're, we've, we're, uh, been looking at different options for that as well. So we've got a, a completion date, uh, anticipated completion date at the end of November, um, we've been working towards those, so.
Which department's in charge of that?
Oh, Works.
Yeah, it seems to kind of drag a bit, and seeing with the speed radar signs, we've ordered these before, nothing new. They should have just repeated that order and off we go. I don't, I don't know why it keeps, always gets dragged out, these two things.
And it's just, uh, just a final comment, cause I think there might be a couple of things that might be missing from this, I'm not sure, but I I don't see the, uh, I know the council talked about, uh, doing a bit of beautification in front of the building here, I don't see that item on here, so, uh.
Thought it'd be an operating item.
That's on operating.
Okay.
As is the GPS.
Okay.
Is in operating as well.
Where is that reported?
That's it, that's an, it's a, it's an operating.
It's reported here?
Yeah, it'd be in, it wouldn't be reported on your capital, this is capital.
No, no, I know, but is it a line item in this report?
Uh, it would be on your operating budget in your financial statement, yes.
Which page is it?
Um.
But we won't see that, right?
It won't be, it won't be.
It's not in this report? That's what you're saying, it's not in this report?
No.
It's, I think.
The amount that has been spent will be in your operating, but you're not gonna see a one-line item stating beautification.
Well, yeah, that's what I wanna see, that's what I wanna see.
It's mixed into everything.
Well, I, I wanna see the.
That would be an individual report.
I wanna see the detail.
Yeah, that would be an individual report.
Is that, is that presented on here, or?
No, that would have to, it would be an in- individual report, that would have to be prepared, um, if you're asking for something that is specific like that.
I just wanna know, I'm sorry, I just, I just wanna see some visibility in terms of the projects at council, whether it's operating or capital. I wanna see some visibility of the projects that we, you're marked to get done, I wanna see the status of them, uh, percentage of completion. I wanna see updates in terms of any risks associated with it, so that we understand, cause people have been, like, I'm asking questions, like, I'm wondering, I'm driving by the ar- the building all the time. What's happening with this project, right? So I mean, and then I don't see the, I don't see the line item on the financial report, but I think it should be. These are things that council prioritized in over a twelve-month period, and I, and I think it's important that council sees some visibility in terms of the project status.
I agree.
That would not necessarily be a part of your financial number report, those would be separate additional reports, like, so if you want, um, if you want, uh, like a status report, uh, every six months, like, you know, partway through the year and then at the end of the year, those would be individual reports that would come to council, like your Canada Day reports, right? Um, any of those special projects that aren't necessarily capital.
For me, yeah, I mean, six months reports are useful, but in our case, it's not, because more frequent that it's reported, the status, the more beneficial is the council, and it, and it in being able to pivot and making some strategic decisions in terms of what to do, so. At minimum, it's gotta be bimonthly, but I'd like to see a monthly status report from whoever, whoever's PMing.
Can I request additional staff member, please?
Whoever's project managing that particular item.
Yeah.
Well, you've got the anticipated start dates and completion dates, so that's not a financial thing either, really. Um, I, you know, what I would like to have seen here is, when did they order this surveillance camera? When did they order the radar signs? Cause they've had that approved pretty early in the spring, and yet, you know, I don't think it got ordered. And then the other thing is, we really wanted that front to be done this year, I think we all did, all the staff wanted it too, and it didn't get done, so.
Yeah, I.
I guess, when is it gonna get done, cause we want it done.
Yeah, understand, uh, understood, there's a, there's a lot of priority items here, there's a lot of items here. Um, I think, I think there's been a good effort to make good progress on a large number of them. Um, realistically, uh, there was a fair amount of, um, of project changes on the fly as well, in terms of the roads program, in terms of, uh, the play structure, uh, and 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 otherwise, so I think, I think we've made good efforts, staff have made good efforts to to deliver, um, on the projects as 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 best as we can, we're still making good efforts, we're still targeting completion towards the end of October. There will be carryovers, um.
Well, let me see this, I understand the play structure is subcontracted out, so subcontractor's taking care of it, it's not in the hands of our staff to do the play structure, right?
Well.
It's a, it's basically, we have to wait on the subtrade.
Yeah, but, but the the play structure was delayed as we, as we worked through the different surface.
Right, that's fair enough.
Yeah.
What my concern is, and I think it, uh, Councilor Paktikant's concern is, is why are we so delayed on the surveillance cameras? And why are we so delayed on the speed radar signs? Because why are we so delayed on our front landscaping? You know, if staff doesn't have time to do it, then we should think about getting a landscaper in to clean it up. Maybe we need to do that, maybe we need to budget for that, rather than putting it on P W, cause they don't have time. But, you know, when I think of a surveillance camera, right, we gave options. We actually had somebody come to here, to the council chambers and give us options. So I don't, you know, this is Google, Google and speed radar signs, we already ordered them before, so this is just a reorder from the same company. I think it's just delegation, maybe to somebody who's got time to do that, maybe we don't have anybody, I'll volunteer. I can do that, because those are simple things, those two things to me are pretty simple, it's, it's ordering. And if it, if you've got a backorder, you got a backorder, you can't do anything about it, you just do your best. But, um, maybe we need to talk about next year, if we have to pull out the stuff in the front and put something new, and maybe we need to hire a landscaping company to do that.
Yeah, the, the landscaping was fairly far gone, we did bring in a contractor to do it, it wasn't P W working on it.
Okay.
It was done by the contractor, contractor cleared out a lot of the old weed, a lot of the old brush, it's starting to fill back in with with, um, so the the more original material that was, that we wanted to grow out of there, and a replanting is gonna take place next fall, or next spring. So it was brought in by the contractor.
Are we keeping those grasses? Cause I don't think we wanted to keep those grasses, did we?
No, we're clearing that, we're doing a clear out, and we're, we're taking a look at, at.
Some annual, or some perennials or something.
But it was, it was basically a, a de-thatch of that that took place, uh.
Okay.
Is, uh.
So it's partially done now?
It's par- it's partially done.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Okay, carry on.
Oh, that, that's all I have.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have anything else. I'm, I'm not gonna go into the detail when last, last time, so.
Say, say again.
I said, I'm not gonna go into the detail that I did last time, but I will do that occasionally, that, um, we do a thorough review of the financial statement.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Have we got our last year's audit to see what's done?
Uh, no, we're working on that. Um, I have emailed the auditor of the information that they have requested and then the person that was working on it is on holidays until next week, so.
Okay, so when did we get that in?
The, the audit?
Our, our, um, our, um, raw data? Or did that go to?
Uh, I sent them everything in end of August, middle of August, I should say.
Okay.
I emailed them our flash drive with all our data. Um, they did request information from me around the twentieth of September, which we know is really not a good time for me with tax.
Yeah, tax season, yeah, yeah.
Right? So I did send them a little bit here and there through which that I could get to
Yep.
and they received the, the remainder of the data last week, Thursday.
They should be done by the end of October, for sure.
I hope so. So I'm gonna follow up with our head auditor and ask him a timeline.
Did we have any delays with the partners giving in the, uh, information, like Cartier or any other?
Um, I have not received Red River Planning.
Yeah, okay, I.
So that'll also delay our audit.
Okay, so you will get the, you will get that this month. I've just got an email.
Okay, yeah, so that, that's also a delay for the audit. They did ask about that one as well.
Yeah, I just got an email like an hour ago.
Okay, well, there we go.
Yeah, so you'll have that.
Go ahead, Councilor Patakan.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you, Samir. I just wanna, uh, maybe I'd rephrase my comment to a question to the CEO. If there's any value in providing a sort of a supplementary, um, something, some supplementary reporting regarding the projects that are listed in the capital budget from the project manager, the staff workers managing these, like, on a monthly basis.
Um, I have, uh, I do have capital project meetings with staff to, uh, to monitor the progress, to, uh, to get updates on the progress, the completion dates, and to talk about any issues that they're encountering. So, um, I don't know if there'd be value to me. I guess the question is whether or not council feels it'd be value to them. I think to provide monthly updates on, on, on sort of a, uh, a project by project basis, um, I think it would be taxing. I think if there's, if there's individual projects where, um, an issue has been encountered or whether there's a delay or reason for delay, maybe a comment section down the side of the report, um, might help provide some, some sort of, uh, uh, awareness of what's going on and what's happening.
So I would rephrase a suggestion then to say that anything with a hundred percent doesn't need any comments, but anything below fifty percent probably should, and, and the, the prime, prime example is Councilor Campbell's, like, I thought this was gonna be a lighted sign for the business park. That's something that was not known, I guess. And so if there was some, if there was some description of, oh yeah, we're working with hydro or we're working to, you know, design the light in the sign, I think that would be helpful rather than finding out later on.
And I think there's, there's some other simple things like access center gym basketball backboard replacement, anticipated start date, June one, anticipated completion, October thirty first.
Yeah, the, the, the contractor who was hired to do that work, uh, had, uh, had hurt themselves and took ill and, uh, still has plans to be able to complete it by October thirty first.
Okay, so, so sometimes we just don't know.
Yeah, and, and, and this is it. There's, there's a backstory to, to a lot or most of these. Uh, in, in a lot of cases, you'll see things like, um, a low percentage in terms of completion. What in a lot of cases means is that a tender's been prepared or quotes have been gathered, uh, an order's been placed and materials are about to arrive and implementations.
That's all we need to have to see.
Right, and, 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 and sort of, so those type of comments column, you know, in some cases, um, is something that, that we could, we could look at perhaps adding, um, um.
Even just order.
I, I think, I think, I think in, in sort of a, in cases where it does look like there's, um, specific issues that, that, um, uh, you know, may draw some questions.
Councilor Patakan?
I, I did just wanna address, uh, Councilor Patakan's remarks here. So if we went back and looked at previous meetings, we've talked about, uh, the hydro for this sign. If not every time it's been brought up, or, you know, the majority of the time I have, we've, we've talked about the hydro there about this, so. It shouldn't be a surprise to anybody that there was electricity for that sign.
Thank you. Any else? Okay, we'll carry on then to the next, uh, item on the list. Uh, miscellaneous correspondence for the month of September, four point four, four point four point two. Anyone have any question?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Oh, pardon me, yes, you're correct.
Four point four point two?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Any other questions regarding these correspondence? Okay, don't hear anything, so four point, four point three is, uh, twenty four, twenty twenty four, Seven Oak School Division Scholarship. Go ahead, Councilor Bocetti.
Um, just looking at the list here of the names, so was nothing given out at Maples? It shows two West Caldona collegiate ones and.
Yeah, there wasn't, uh, there wasn't a student at Maples this year, is my understanding. Is that correct? Yeah. There wasn't a West St. Paul student at Maples this year.
Any other comments? Okay, uh, nothing on four point five. Okay, uh, four point five one, request for service.
Okay.
You wanna, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, so we had, um, during September, we had, uh, thirty one, um, requests for service opened, uh, twenty three closed. Majority of, uh, these were in, uh, bylaw and public works. What we saw is, we saw an increase in, uh, a substantial increase in the number of parking violation requests for service, particularly semis. Um, we sort of had a spike in, uh, in September in terms of those. And in public works, um, as we were working through some ditch works and so forth, we did have some drainage and culvert requests that, that, um, that had come up. So we saw an increase in, in those.
Any questions? Go ahead, Councilor Bocetti.
Okay, uh, well, regarding the spike we had in the semi notifications and the columns, we did put a, we did put email blasts out and stuff, so we, you know, brought it to the forefront. Um, I'd like.
And, 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 and pursuant to that, we did see an increase in, uh, in, uh, concerns that were raised and complaints in RFES that followed that, that, uh, that e-blast.
The question I have is, what are the next steps with bylaw? Can we have someone in on weekends? A couple of weekends to do a, you know, kind of a blitz? Because, you know, it's, it's not happening Monday to Friday from nine to five. But yet you can look all day Saturday, all day Sunday, they're in the people's driveway, the semis are parked in the driveways. And yes, they are parked in the forty-four foot yard driveways, so they're quite full and they're sticking out onto the road. And I think that's when we need to have a bylaw officer maybe knock on some doors on those days, because now you know directly where that vehicle is, is.
Yeah, we can take a look at, uh, at increasing weekend enforcement on that.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, takes us down to four point five two, where we do the January to September, uh, request for service.
Yeah, um, you know, when you look at this report, you see that, um, there's been a, a, a dramatic falloff in the number of requests of service that we saw. We saw that spike, um, early in the summer, sort of late June, early July, where we had a, a large number of ga- grass cutting complaints. Weed, weed complaints, um, that were difficult to address through the heavy rains that we were having. So we've seen that, um, that those, uh, requests for service have fallen off to sort of a more typical seasonal, uh, number now and to a more regular number now, as is the, uh, the number of bylaw enforcement complaints, uh, have dropped off substantively. Um, what you'll also notice if you take a look, um, uh, to the January, uh, first to January thirtieth, uh, report statistics, is you'll see a dramatic, um, increase in the number of closed reports in both public works and bylaw and, uh, compared to the number of open over the course of twenty twenty four thus far, the, the first nine months of, of twenty twenty four, where we've closed, uh, two hundred and seven, um, report, um, RFSs in public works and a hundred and eighty-five in bylaw versus ninety-six and ninety-seven being opened in each. So we, uh, we've made some, uh, some, some standard of improvement in terms of, uh, closing off the, um, number of RFSs, uh, over the last nine months as well.
Anyone have questions? So I guess I was wondering, cause we had this weather this year and there was a lot of, um, conditions, the road conditions. I'm just wondering what was, like, I know I asked you to take a look at how, what the number of complaints were for the gravel roads that we have this year, because of the wet weather.
Yeah.
Specifically, the three that was, uh, Full Shore and Rushman, or four, I should say, Panida and Miller.
Yeah, so on, um, Full Shore, we had, uh, one complaint of the gravel road, um, between May first and October seventh. Uh, on Miller, we had six. On Panida, we had one, and on Rushman, we had two.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Three nine, we'll go down to the next one now. Five point, oh, four point six one, Manitoba, Shared, uh, Shared Health Manitoba, the medical response service agreement.
Okay, this, um, this is, uh, a faculty recommendation to authorize the mayor to execute the, uh, medical first, first response service agreement with, uh, Shared Health Manitoba. So this, um, this is an agreement between West St. Paul Shared Health and Interle- Interlake Eastern Regional Health Authority. It allows us to provide service to residents of West St. Paul. It's a requirement of our annual license and it's, uh, this is the same agreement that was signed last year with no change to it this year, with no fees or, uh, no costs associated with it.
Any questions? So I guess I just wanna clarify, so the medical response is only medical first responders that the RM is able to do for the.
Yes.
Right? Even though they have, uh, paramedics on staff, they can't do any paramedic work, because that's all what we're, subject to is medical first responders. Correct?
Um.
This, this, this is a different thing though, isn't it?
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't, this isn't got anything to do with the individual memberships or the college of paramedics. It's just, it's just an agreement to, to provide service, that, that we can provide service to local RM residents and, and basically act, um, with, on behalf of Shared Health.
It's like a yearly license.
Yeah, it's a licensing requirement.
Yeah.
It's just registered as you.
No, I know, I just wanna clarify is that, you know, we do have, uh, paramedics on the fire department. When they go to a, a call, they cannot use their param- paramedic license on any of the residents here, because they can only apply, um, first responders, correct?
Yeah, but I don't, what does that have to do with this report? This report is just basically, they've got the ambulance. This is your ambulance.
Because this report. Yeah, but this. No.
Or your first.
First, first response to the fire department.
First responder paramedics, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
But we can't use the, the fire department first responders, because, I don't know.
This is between, this is between.
This is Shared Health.
This is, this, this authorizes the fire department to act as a first responder.
Okay, so it authorizes, that's the way.
This is a housekeeping yearly license that we have to authorize and.
But don't we have additional support other than our fire department?
That's a whole separate.
With Shared, with Shared Health?
With Shared Health.
Yeah.
With Shared Health, if, if available, yes.
Yeah, if available, that's the problem.
Yeah.
My concern was is that this last year, there were some changes to the, what fire departments could do. Uh, previously, they had some more, um, they had more param- they had larger parameters to give, uh, I'm gonna say medication and everything else, and that got changed this last year, even though that there are people on a fire department, um, are certified to do that. But because we have a, an agreement with only medical first responders, that's the limit that they can, they can, uh, provide.
Yeah.
Right?
I don't, I don't know, is that the case?
Yeah, there's, they can't do advanced care paramedics. They can't do advanced care paramedics.
They what? No. Well, okay, but that was changed again, though, from what, um, the fire department said to us, though, that they had broadened that a little bit and had changed it when Ryan Yakel came in.
That's that whole different thing with the licensing practitioners and that's a whole separate.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
That's a different thing.
Anyways, we have to sign this agreement whether we like it or not. It's an authorization, right?
Okay, four point six, then, then four point seven, four point eight, there's nothing, four point five, there's nothing, any new business, there's nothing. Takes us down to number seven, question period. Does anyone have any questions? By all means, come on forward.
Um, Alvin three twelve, have one? I, I have three. Would you like me to run through them?
Please, ask by all means, three questions.
So the first one is fairly easy. The RCMP report in, we were having that appended to the agenda, but the last couple of times it hasn't. Um, I apologize, I didn't look to see if it was with the minutes of the last meeting. Is, is the public going to have access to those police records?
I just got access when I walked in.
Uh, our.
That's a head, that's more than I know.
Our MLO will answer that question. Okay.
Yes, they were submitted, uh, post-agenda release, so they will be placed on the agenda for everyone to have access to.
On the agenda or the minutes?
In the agenda.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, and then, uh, further to your discussion about the signs at, the sign at the business park, the sign for Meadowlands, um, I know there's, uh, s- two dates in use on the capital projects, but, um, the Meadowlands payment was in the September. So a hundred and five thousand was, uh, listed in the payment register in September, so the Meadowlands one is done. So my question is just, um, what we got for that, cause that's well over any discussion about the, uh, business park. So what, what did we get for the hundred and five thousand? What was that that we paid for? And how did that come about for, for us to pay it? And then the last question is regarding the requests for service. Um, on the ones where it's noxious weeds, how is it determined, once a complaint comes in, how is it determined that you've reached a completion, that whatever property was, had the weeds that now they are gone? Or in some of these more complex cases where there are multiple violations, again, how is it determined when in, that everything is now in compliance?
Uh, I'll, I'll ask the CEO if he's, are you able to answer that question or do you have to go?
Yeah, I know, usually, usually the noxious weed and grass cutting is kind of bundled as one, so if, if it's long and if it's, um, uh, problematic, or once it's mowed, it's considered complete.
And is there a time period involved or what the process is?
I would imagine, uh.
A time period until the, it's closed or?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll mow it as, as quickly as we can get to it and when it's mowed, it'll be, it'll be, the file will be closed at that point.
And then the ones where the individual is doing it, how is that determined?
They get letters and then, so there's a week or thirty days or.
Yeah.
Given rain. I, I just, no, cause I dealt with one with a resident, so.
Okay. And for the signs for Meadowlands?
Was that the arch? Yeah, it was the arch. That's the contribution towards the arch.
It was part of the DA that was originally signed with the developer. Uh, it was a hundred thousand plus GST, so the GST will be returned through our GST return, uh, once it's completed, uh, by the end of the month. So our contribution was a hundred thousand towards the arch within the Meadowlands development.
And do we know what its total cost was, like, what portion of that?
Uh, I think, I think it was around, was it three fifty?
No, I think it was closer to four.
It was four?
Between, yeah, between four or five hundred thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the, the developer's contribution was three fifty.
Yeah.
Right, yes. I think, I think that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just before the next, uh, delegation comes up, for the MLO, I'm just, uh, based on the request of the resident here, this is protected A information, so I just was checking, there is a disclaimer at the. this is protected A information, so I just was checking. There is a disclaimer at the bottom saying it can't be distributed or, you know, shared with anything. So can we just check with the RCMP to double check?
Yes, it will be the, the quarterly report that is added publicly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
L link ten forty five, Toshaf Road. Uh, my questions have to do with four point four point two, the miscellaneous con- uh, correspondence. Um, in the section, uh, there are letters from concerned parents regarding the overcrowding in West St. Paul school and how students and teachers are being negative, negatively affected. There are specific examples. Has council, can, this, this question through the mayor.
Yeah.
Has council considered what it can do to stop the worsening of this serious problem? I recognize that this council inherited the problem uh, of overpopulation, but it's also contributed to it by continuing to improve large residential developments which result in a greater population for the school. When the school in West St. Paul cannot handle that, that population and no school is even close to being constructed. So I'm hoping that will council talk about this problem publicly in a future meeting. And the next question is, um, there's a report from the Minister of Municipal and Northern Relations, the Minister of Indigenous Economic Development, on the PDF pages ninety seven to ninety eight. The fourth paragraph um, states that the municipal operating grant is unconditional and it gives the municipality full flexibility to allocate the funding according to its local priorities. The government is requesting that your municipality report on the na- uh, notional or estimated allocation of the municipal operating grant towards core municipal services and programs and identify high level outcomes achieved in twenty twenty four. And that will help this department analyze how funding is being applied locally. So, and it ensures that there, that the RN meets its ongoing and evolving municipal needs. So I, uh, there's a report that is to be completed uh, in, by June the thirtieth in twenty twenty five. And I am wondering about whether or not this report would be um, open to public and also are there plans for it to be accessed via a meeting agenda? Not only this would be helpful to the public to understand how that funding is being used, just as it's important to the government, I'm sure that there would be a lot of interest uh, on the part of the public.
Just those two questions.
Just those two questions.
So I guess, I don't know if, uh, is anyone able to answer about over?
I, I can, you know, there was something that just came out in the last couple of days. Uh, the province has approved two portables to be built uh, at the school. And apparently there is already something in progress for, for a timeline.
If you read these letters in the correspondence, those uh, portables were promised last year and didn't, um, it didn't happen.
They were actually promised before that, but there is something now, with, with it all being spotlighted, that there is something now taking.
Yes, but council by continuing to um, approve of large some divisions is contributing to this overpopulation of the school. And so I think it's something to be thought about. Maybe you will agree or maybe you won't agree.
So you had another question about the report being public from the province on uh, the gas, I'm going to call it the gas tax.
Yeah.
They are requiring that we do some sort of analysis of it. I'm, I don't know if.
Yeah, I, the municipal operating grant has had a requirement of an annual report, report uh, ever since they changed the actual name of it. Um, the report, the grants, what it was called in the past, also had three different reports that were completed. They are completed annually. They are uploaded to the province annually by myself. In particular, the municipal operating grant goes to help offset our operating costs for the entire municipality. So we use it to operate our administration site, our fire department, public works site, as well as our recreation.
But you send the report to the government?
I send it, yeah. I upload it, I.
Is, is, is that something you share with council?
We've never shared it in the past, no. So that is something that council would have to
Ask?
Ask and make a request through the CAO.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, it's never been shared with council in the past. It's always just been on my desk. I complete it, I upload it within the timeline that's required, and that's where it goes. We've never gotten any kind of feedback or anything on it either from the province, so.
Okay, thank you.
I think it would help transparency for the public.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Council Bichetti.
But we do during budget time decide that's what is coming out of that. And it is brought up publicly through our public hearing for the budget and, and saying that it's coming out of different reserves and through that, so it is quite open.
The, the municipal operating grant is actually a part of our revenue and it basically lowers the mill rate that we have to charge to the residents. So for example, if we're collecting five hundred thousand from the municipal operating grant to offset our operating expenses, that's five hundred thousand dollars less than we have to collect from the residents uh, through the mill rate. So it helps lower your, your taxes that you have to pay on your home.
Just to point a comment, the more transparency for the rate payers, the better, I believe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, three and nine. So that takes us down now to our in-camera session. To a roll in camera. Okay, we have now concluded our, our committee of the whole meeting and the meeting is adjourned at eight o'clock PM. Thank you.